Good evening, I'd like to call to order our school committee meeting of January 25th, We have a few people absent this evening. The superintendent is not present, and Mrs. Arnish is not present, and Dr. Quick is not present this evening. So we'll muddle along without them, see how well we do. The approval of items by consensus, Mr. Rogero will be taking the superintendent's place tonight, so he's our person in charge.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, there are two items on the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the January 11th, 2012 regular session, and approval of warrants G409, L33, L34, L35, R214, R215, R216, and payroll for 11812.
Okay, thank you, and we'll take those in three motions. Oh, Mr. Mckays?
I'll just go ahead and set the motions.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2012.
Do you have a second? Mr. Hayes, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Vale?
Just a comment, I just believe that the name of the student who addressed the committee two weeks ago was Alexandra, not Alexa.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so we'll approve these with that correction. All right. Okay, everybody in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda? Number two, Mr. Mckays?
I make a motion to approve the warrants as read by Mr. Rogero.
Thank you, do you have a second? Mr. Hayes, okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. And the motion to approve the payroll warrant, Mr. Mckays?
Sure, I'll go three for three. I make a motion to approve the payroll of 118, 2012.
A second, Mr. Hayes, all those in favor? One, two, three, four in favor, one abstained. Okay, thank you. All right. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. There are two items under the superintendent's report. First is a timeline for the selection of the Woburn Street principal in the section, and the second is a professional development update.
The timeline for the Woburn Street principal, there's been a correction, there needed to be a change in a couple of the dates, so I had put it on your seat tonight, and the vacancy advertisement's being published, the search advisory committee is being finalized. We need one person from the school committee. I would be interested in serving on this particular committee, however, if there's somebody who is more so, is there anybody else? It's so difficult, being the only one who doesn't work, I'm available for these dates, and I'm just not sure I know it's hard for other people to make the dates.
You're there too, because you're going to teach, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And so if no one has an objection, I'm going to, I'll serve on this committee, so we'll tell Mrs. Benton that one.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
So it looks like the committee will be comprised of various people, but also two parents representing the Woburn Street School and one parent from the Wildwood School. So for any of the parents from those schools that are watching tonight or on replay, they should just contact the superintendent if they're interested in serving?
Yes, and you know what? I'm just realizing, I forgot whether she read this last time or not.
I don't believe so.
I don't think she did, okay. There is a memorandum here, the school department, I think I'll read, Mr. Hayes, would you mind? You're the secretary. That would be great, would you mind reading it, so then the parents will know?
I shouldn't have opened my mouth, no. No, it's not a problem. "Greetings, the school department is beginning our process of finding a replacement for Mr. Arsenalta, who will be leaving in June. An important part of the process for selecting a new principal of the Woburn Street School will be undertaken by a committee that I will appoint. This committee will be known as the Search Advisory Committee, or the SAC, S-A-C. The role of the SAC is to review candidate application packets, determine which candidates should be invited to interview for the position, conduct the interviews, and make a group decision on which candidates should be recommended to the superintendent as finalists for the position. The SAC will consist of three staff members from the Woburn Street, one staff member from the Wildwood, three district administrators, one school committee representative, and two parents representing the Woburn Street School, and one parent from the Wildwood School. The SAC will be chaired by Assistant Superintendent of Schools Kate Burnham. This memo serves as an invitation to parents who are interested to volunteer to serve on the SAC as the parent representatives. If you are interested in serving on the SAC, please notify me of your interest no later than Thursday, February 8th."
Nine, oh, sorry.
Oh, nine, now it's nine, that's right.
You're on the new one, you're on the old.
Oh, you know what? In that case, I better, let's see.
So far, it's been the same.
So far, it's the same. Okay. Catch me if I make another one. If there are more than two parents who express interest, I will make the decision and notify all who expressed interest of the choice. I anticipate that the time commitment will be approximately as follows. Review of resumes at your convenience between February 22nd and March 2nd.
Yep.
The SAC meeting would take place on March 3rd.
5th.
March 5th, from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Roman House. The interviews would be two or three evenings between 5:30 and 8:30 between March 12th and March 25th?
23rd.
23rd, okay. And the finalists from the Woburn Street, so then two or three days, times to be determined, you would visit, and as part of this visit, we will invite parents to meet the candidates, and we encourage SAC members to be present. So if you are interested in serving on the SAC, please email me at joanne.benton@wilmington.k12.ma.us, no later than February 9th. Thank you, Joanne Benton.
Excellent, that's good. All right. Thank you. Any more questions on that? Our next item on the professional development update, Mrs. Burnham.
I'd like to update everyone where we are to date in terms of professional development. In terms of Wilmington University workshops, we have to date offered 41 different workshops, all taught by staff members in district. To date, we have a total number of participants at 371. That number is still climbing as enrollment for some current offerings is still open. In terms of professional development offerings out of district, we have had 116 teachers and administrators attend mostly conferences offered, whether they be national, regional, or state, in addition to some other local offerings through local organizations. In terms of our curriculum improvement time, in September, the elementary schools conducted an in-depth analysis of MCAS performance data, student growth percentile, and test item review, while the middle school teachers began their introduction to differentiated instruction, and the high school teachers began a year-long look at 21st century teaching and learning with a consultant from Teachers 21. Our full day, CIT day, November 1st, the focus was on differentiated instruction. There were two guest speakers that were brought in for the day. We held a keynote address for the entire staff, and then there were breakout sessions for the morning and the afternoon where the two guest speakers split. One worked with the staff from the elementary, and one worked with the staff from the secondary grades. We also offered a working lunch session, which was, I think, the highlight of the day, a discussion on brain research and learning. This Friday, we have another CIT day coming up. The elementary staff will be gathering at the Wilmington Middle School auditorium to be addressed by Irene Fontis on our new...
Say what time Irene Fontis will be there?
I want to say that they decided roughly a 1:00 start, I think, 1 to 3.
She's going to be there in the afternoon, not in the morning.
Yeah, she will be there in the afternoon.
Because of the kids. Okay, thank you.
So Irene Fontis is a nationally renowned expert in reading instruction, and we will be using the Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, and she's coming in to talk to the elementary staff about that. The middle school will continue their work with differentiated instruction, taking a closer look at the different ways that you can differentiate instruction, and the high school staff will continue working on 21st century teaching and learning with a focus on project-based learning. Looking ahead at the remainder of this school year, we are currently working to redesign our mentoring program for new teachers in collaboration with Burlington Public Schools. We are working with a consultant who also works with Burlington Public Schools in a train-the-trainer model, so that we are starting with a small group of teachers who are participating in this training. By the end of this year, we will be meeting with teachers from Burlington who also have participated in the training, and making decisions about how to reshape the mentoring program that we have currently. But the collaboration piece will be something unique and offer more opportunities for both our staff and the Burlington staff. Also, we're developing a collaboration with Merrimack College to bring some graduate-level courses to the district to be taught on this campus by our teachers. So it's a fantastic opportunity for our teachers to earn graduate credits at a reduced cost, while our staff have the opportunity, if they choose to teach a course, to become adjunct faculty with Merrimack College. So it's a really great opportunity all the way around. We're looking forward to developing more opportunities in that vein. The Professional Development Committee is also putting together a professional development survey that will serve as a needs assessment. That survey will be conducted with staff district-wide. Beyond this year, the Professional Development Committee has begun planning for next year's full-day Professional Development Day, and at this time, we're thinking that the focus may be on brain-based research on teaching and learning. The committee is also looking to utilize Aspen, which is our new data management system, which has a professional development feature built into it, to see if we can't streamline the process of teacher registrations for in-house offerings, tracking their in-service credits and professional development points, et cetera. That will be a great thing to reduce the paper flow, as well as facilitate enrollment and tracking for staff. In terms of PD-related projects that are ongoing, the professional development resources are continually updated on our PD page on the website. We have been working in collaboration with the Wilmington Teachers Association, the Professional Development Committee, and key members of the Roman House staff to outline and streamline the request for professional development and the recording of professional development credits, whether they be graduate credits, in-service credits, PDPs and the like. That will facilitate ease on both ends, for teachers and for the staff at Roman House. The Reflections Newsletter, something that I author, has been going out roughly twice a month, promoting best practices, and that's growing a bit where teachers and students are having the opportunity to write pieces that will be included in the newsletters. We've also begun learning walks. Teri Buschemi, who's the elementary math coordinator, has been conducting learning walks through the math instruction periods at the elementary schools, and providing in writing feedback to all those teachers in that particular building, the great things that she saw, and ideas for ways that they can enhance what they're already doing. We're also looking to continue that at the middle school level. We've begun the walks at the middle school level involving Linda Peters, who's the curriculum team leader for math, 6 through 12, Principal McMiniman, and myself, in the same model, writing up our observations of the practices that we see, giving feedback to the staff with ideas that they can move forward with. And lastly, we've moved forward with the student focus groups. Several have been conducted to date, two at the middle school level, one at the high school level. At the middle school, there was a round of student focus groups conducted back in November on the issue of homework. We had some really interesting feedback from them, which has been shared with the homework committee, and that was followed up with, more recently, the same type of a format with the high school students. At the high school, we involved over 100 students over two days, eight lunch periods in two days, from freshmen to seniors at all academic levels and interests, and their input will be carried forward to the next meeting of the homework committee. We also conducted a focus group discussion at the middle school level regarding their attitudes towards MCAS testing, and we got some interesting information there as well, which is very helpful in our decision-making as we look toward preparing them for the MCAS test, and what types of things might be most beneficial to them. So I thank all of the students for their input. It's been very valuable.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Hayes?
Just a few, just quick questions. Moving forward, Superintendent Benton emails us her newsletter that she sends out twice a month, and I know that you have your Reflections Newsletter. I know it's geared more towards professional development, but since the school committee is in charge of professional development, if we could be included on that mailing list and receive the email newsletter?
They are also posted on the website.
WPSI, yeah. I did go back and I looked through the back issues.
But certainly.
Yeah, appreciate that. Also, you made reference to a survey that you're going to be conducting with all the staff in terms of making sort of a, you know, needs assessment, and could the school committee receive the results of that survey?
Sure.
That would be great. And then just, you know, my overall comment would be, I think, you know, I think things look fantastic. I remember when we interviewed you last May or June, you know, I had asked you the question, you know, how do you provide quality professional development on a limited budget? And, you know, you had talked about collaboration with other districts, which is what we're doing with Burlington as an example. You talked about teachers visiting classrooms in the district or outside the district, something we're doing. You talked about student focus groups, which now you're doing, so it is good to see you follow through with some of the ideas that you made reference to in your interview. So overall, I think things are fantastic, and I know, you know, Wilmington University has been going on for several years now, but I think it is great, and keep up the good work.
Thanks. Anybody else? I just want to say, I'm sure the teachers do appreciate, but the connection with Merrimack College is, that's an unbelievable coup, I feel, for them to be able to become adjunct professors and to have that opportunity. I would have loved to have that, and I just think that will just show you some of the teachers who are really, really into their profession. I think it's fabulous.
And we took the opportunity this year because of the focused district-wide on differentiated instruction, that that would be the first course offering that we would pursue, but I see potential for some real content-based work to be done. For instance, math courses being offered here for math teachers right here on campus, but graduate courses.
That's what's so important, because I have to say, in everybody across the state's professional development, the charge originally was to make sure that you were providing professional development for content areas, and as time goes on, less and less content, people get into technology, and they cover content through technology, that's a cop-out. And, no, seriously, that's how I feel. It's just, in our school system, there was never, occasionally, there was a writing course offered, but unless we went out and paid for a course, and many an occasion, it certainly wasn't paid for through my school committee or my school system where I worked. And I think that that's what's happened, it's another unfunded mandate, and the school systems who really work out there and try to find ways to get content for their teachers are the really top-notch school systems, which I think we are.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Sorry, I forgot to mention this previously. You had mentioned that the classes are supposed to be sort of, you know, content-heavy, and just in the future, obviously, it's already going on now, and that's fine, but in the future, you know, I noticed that yoga is the most popular professional development class this cycle or semester or whatnot, and I was wondering if that's going to be included next cycle, if there could be sort of a justification as to why that should be offered, when there's so many other things to offer. I do know that stress, you know, I think stress is a big part of it, and I could use some yoga, but, you know, there's so many things that, you know, is out there in the professional development world, and to be offering yoga, you know, I don't know, so...
If I can address that, I had the same concern when I saw that title, the primary title, yoga, come across the desk.
Right.
But upon review of the proposal, it really got to the heart of using yoga techniques to reduce stress in the classroom, not necessarily just for teachers, but for students. And that's an important piece. There's a lot of research being done now in terms of the impact of stress on learning. So I think that those components, you know, the techniques that you can use to reduce stress for whole classes or individuals in a classroom setting, that's a step that you're making towards providing an environment that's safe for students to be able to focus and learn. And I can say that if that component weren't there, and if I did not know the value of the stress reduction in a learning environment, I may not have approved.
Sure.
But I believe that it had real quality to it.
See, and that's me questioning you there, and you had the answer, but, you know, we were just provided with a list, we weren't provided with a description of what the class was.
Absolutely, yep.
So just based on the title of the class, it was a little questionable, but thanks for clearing that up.
Great, thank you. Kate, any other? That was a great report, thank you very much. All right. Our next item of business is old business, and we are going to postpone the vote on the 2013 budget for a couple of reasons. One of them, obviously, the superintendent was not able to be here tonight. The other one is that we actually don't want to vote on it before we hear from the town manager that this is our budget, and we'd have to do another vote, so. We have January 30th, that's next Monday, at 7:00. Hopefully, we can all be at the Board of Selectmen's meeting at 7:00, and Mr. Kyra will be presenting his budget, and we'll find out that night exactly what we will be given, and so we're postponing that. On our first meeting in February, February 8th, we will have our, we have to go into a little budget hearing, and so we'll have that on February 8th, and we'll vote the budget then. So our next item of business is the vote on the concussion, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I just have a question about the process. I mean, my understanding is that the school committee sets the budget, so don't we just want to hear what the town manager's, whether he'll support it or not, and whether he's behind it?
Right.
It's not that he approves it. We set the budget for the schools, right? But we want his support, and we'd like to know his view and the town's view of it.
The, I think things have changed a little bit. I don't know, Mr. Mckays?
No, I actually, I believe Mr. Vale is correct in his statement, that we actually set our own budget, and then we presented to the town manager for his, you know, review and approval according to what...
And then he presented to the town meeting.
Correct.
And obviously, at some point, it's approved by town meeting.
But I believe that in her budget negotiations, the superintendent has worked out the budget with the town manager.
Sure, we want his approval, we want his support.
Right.
But it's not that he approves it.
All right, I'll change my word, I'm sorry. How would we say it?
No, I just, I think you introduced it fine, and I know that there's continuing meetings, and we'd like to know whether he's in favor of this budget or not. Then it would come back to us. I mean, if he's against it, we'd have to decide whether we want to take his opinion under advisement or not.
That's true. Technically, that's true.
Or work with him, right?
Right, that is true.
I mean, I think we do want to hear, I think he'll support it, I think we have a good working relationship with the town manager. I'd like to see it continue.
Exactly.
But just as a matter of policy, we're elected to set the budget for the school district.
True.
As the town manager is hired by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen would approve, you know, the town budget for presentation to town meeting.
Right.
Not the town manager.
So, I mean, there are instances, I mean, there are instances not in this town, but in other towns where the school committee does set a budget, and the town manager doesn't agree on it, but it does go to town meeting for vote, so it's, again, as Mr. Vale's saying is, it's not his budget to approve, it's ours to approve, and for him to support, along with the Board of Selectmen to support.
I think what I was saying was, it's his town budget, and he sets the town budget. Our budget is within that budget, and so what we find out that night is, if he does agree with the budget, that we have already, we haven't voted on it, but the superintendent has, we have the information that the superintendent is using for her budget. So I think it's just a matter of semantics, but we all mean the same thing.
I'm certainly in favor of finding out whether the town manager likes our budget, and whether he's going to run with it and present our budget as part of the town budget to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Exactly.
And upon all of their reviews and everything else, whether we are all going to collectively submit the whole thing to town meeting. And it's also important for town meeting to know that town meeting votes up or down on the whole school budget, there's no line-item discussions.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So it's sort of yea or nay on that, and the other town budgets, they can actually, town meeting can actually go through line by line and approve individual departments.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's right, but not the school.
Yeah.
You're right. All right. So we'll put that one aside, and our next item is the vote on concussion policy and We were given that information last meeting, and we had discussion on that. Does anyone have any further discussion tonight? Mr. Hayes?
No further discussion, other than at the last meeting, you had asked Superintendent Benton to provide us with information regarding the number of concussions that students had received.
Right.
I'm not sure what, if it's the last school year, or, and that's something that, you know, that's not going to affect my vote tonight, but that's something that I would be interested in seeing. Am I sure we get that? Thank you.
You'll remind us, thank you. Okay, so I would accept a motion, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Public School's concussion policy and procedures. Do we have a motion to do that? Oh, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, I make a motion that we vote to approve the Wilmington Public School's concussion policy and procedures.
Do we have a second? Mr. Mckays? All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda? All right. And the next one is the vote on the high school program of studies. Do we have any questions on that at this point? So I'd entertain a motion to accept the 2012, 2013 high school program of studies. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Mckays? Do we have a second? Okay, Mrs. Carroll? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda? Thank you. Did she give you, okay? All right, our next item is the high school building committee update. Mr. Rogero?
Thank you. We are currently in the design and development phase of the project. Superintendent Benton will give a more detailed update the next meeting, but we do have a meeting coming up on February 1st with the Conservation Commission. That'll be at Town Hall at 7:00 PM to talk to them about some wetlands, and the first part of the project being the field turf project, so, meeting again with the Conservation Commission on February 1st.
Okay. All right. All right, new business. FY12 financial report. Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you. I presented you in your package, a financial report as of January 12th. We're in very, very good shape from a fiscal standpoint. You'll see many of the variances that are identified have to do with lane changes and some contractual salary increases and so forth. I do have a motion at the bottom of the second page asking to allow the Director of Administration of Finance to move budgeted funds from a salary adjustment line to account for some of these lane changes that teachers receive, as well as contractual salary increases and so forth.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Marchese?
Mr. Rogiro, in terms of the monies from the salary adjustment line, will there be anything left over this year, or is it all going to be expended? I know that's always something that we use as a pocket on the side to cover, you know, adjustments as we come through the year, so I'm just wondering if-
Yeah, it won't use it all up. There'll be a little bit left there, but to cover, you know, some potential things that may occur during the rest of the year from a salary standpoint.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I'm sorry. Were you looking for the motion tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, however we want to do it. I guess at some point in the next couple of months, I just want to move them.
Just to clean things up.
Yeah, because it'll reduce the number of variances that you see in the report.
We're not able to, that's part of our role. We have to, we have to approve moving any of these line items. He can't do it without our approval.
Right, I just wasn't sure about the timing, because at the bottom of the page, it says recommended motion, and I wasn't sure if we were going to get to it tonight, or wait for Superintendent Benton to come into the next meeting, or-
That's fine, we could wait till February 8th. If no one mind, we'll do that, because we normally do wait two meetings, talk about for two meetings. And, well, this is not going to, will this hold up anything?
No.
No. How's that sound? Okay to everybody?
Yep. It's already, it's already in the budget, it's just not allocated to the right ones.
Right, exactly. Mr. Marchese?
I just had a comment on finances. I know we kind of were skipping over the FY13 budget, because Mrs. Benton's not here, but there's just something I, again, maybe I'm out of order in bringing this up, but Ms. Rogiro had sent out a list of items for, the request on capital items for this year and so forth. One thing that I didn't see on the list, but I really would like to see it on the list at some point, is adding air conditioning to the middle school. I know the building was originally designed for it. I know the ventilation is in there, but the units are actually not installed. I think it's a great building. It doesn't have operable windows, so the kids are up on the third floor, they can't open the windows. It's stifling hot in there, you know, it's the summer months and the fall months are here. And plus, I think we could use the building all summer long. We could have the CAFS program there, we could have other programs all throughout the summer. Could use the auditorium all summer long for theater programs. I think it'd be a good source of revenue and a good building to coordinate all of our resources during the summer. So I would like to see that as a capital request to the town manager and to the Selectmen saying, you know, let's conduct a feasibility study to see how much it would cost to put air conditioning in the middle school. I'm just curious if the school committee would support such a request.
Do anyone have any comments, questions? Mr. Hayes?
Just to what Mr. Marchese said, I would support that idea. I think it's a great idea. And I did have, I did have a question for Mr. Rogiro, but if anyone else wanted to comment on that.
Oh, I am. I'm in for it too, yeah. Especially in the cafeteria, if anything. No, not where I am, but where the kids sit.
Yes, yes.
On those hot days, I mean, it's germs, germs, germs. It's so stifling hot, and, you know, you're not supposed to open the doors, and you open the window, there's not even any fans, at least fans, you know, in that caf. There's no fans, there's no nothing, no ventilation at all.
Yeah, so I think it'd be worthwhile after in the town to see how much it would cost, so.
Can't hurt. I'm in support. Mr. Vale, you in support of looking into it?
Yeah, I'm in support of looking into it.
Yep, definitely, we could look into it.
Should I make a motion to that effect?
No, Mr. Rogiro will tell Mrs. Benton.
Yeah.
She'll bring it up, I'll have her give us a little report on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
How she thinks it could go.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Let the town manager know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, Mr. Hayes, yes?
So my alma mater, Merrimack College, has already been mentioned tonight, but as I read through page two here, I'm just curious, how much are we saving by using Merrimack College fellowships in lieu of educational assistance?
We're saving about, I think, maybe two ed assistance. And so there's a little bit of savings there, but it's a great opportunity for, again, for our relationship with Merrimack.
Sure.
Merrimack College.
Sure, fantastic. Oh, wait, thank you.
Any other questions on that? We're all set. Thank you, on the financial report. Delegations? No, not tonight, all right. Other subcommittee reports? I know the-
You can do it. I do it last time.
Okay, yeah. Just this afternoon, we had another meeting of the Calendar Committee, and the meeting's going very well. I think we made a lot of progress tonight, and we have a few recommendations that we're going to be going forward with to the Strategic Committee, Strategic Planning Committee, also to the superintendent. We have some ideas that we stand behind, and hopefully, we can see come to fruition in the district. So I don't want to give out any surprises or anything like that, but it's all good, though. It's going to be good for the district, so. We've done our research, we've done a lot of work on it, and I think we can produce a very nice product, so.
All right, sounds good. We'll look forward to seeing that. Any other reports, Mr. Hayes?
Not a report, but I'm not on the homework committee, but I just wanted to bring the people's attention that I know the homework committee kind of stemmed from the screening of Race to Nowhere last year. And just so people at home who maybe didn't get to catch it, or the school committee member who wants to see it again, they're going to be showing it in Tewksbury. The Tewksbury Public Schools are showing it next Wednesday at 7:00 at the Wynn Middle School, which is only seven, eight minutes, you know, from here. So just wanted to let, you know, fellow school committee members and the public know.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Carroll?
I might just mention that I believe that there's a cost-
Oh, yes.
-associated with viewing there.
Thank you, yes. If you don't get tickets in advance, it's $15 at the door.
And I might mention that there's a website, Race to Nowhere. If you Google it, you'll be able to find it. They put up a schedule monthly-
Right.
-for locations that are offering viewings, and many of them are at no cost. So people, I guess, could weigh-
Why is Tewksbury charging?
I don't know.
That's interesting.
But, you know, it's convenient, it's close by, and if the cost isn't a factor, obviously the convenience of having a location so close. But there are other locations. I believe they showed the film last month in Reading.
Right. Do you know, have they actually released it on DVD yet, or they-
As far as I know, they have not.
Okay. Right, thank you.
But, you know, you can go to that website, and they do have, you know, perhaps this particular date is not going to be convenient for some people, but if they're interested in seeing it, they can, they can find-
Sure.
-locations where it's being shown-
Sure.
-on that website.
I think it was on their Facebook page, too. That's where, yeah.
Mr. Hayes and I both attended the CPAC meeting. Could you just give a quick little update, since I was a speaker?
Sure. No, there was just a discussion, so Chairwoman Kane was invited to go to the CPAC meeting. She spoke about one of our favorite topics, the open meeting law, and, you know, taking proper minutes, posting the meetings, you know, properly, you know. The CPAC is technically a subcommittee of this school committee, so they do have, they are, they do have, they fall under open meeting law, so they have to follow the rules just as we do. There was some discussion as to, you know, CPAC, which is a subcommittee of us, has their own subcommittees. So we have subcommittees of subcommittees. What are their roles? Do they have to also subscribe to the open meeting law, which we think they do? You're going to get further clarification on that, though. And then otherwise, it was just, it was a business meeting, so there was no, there was no, you know, special talk. They just went through and they discussed, I don't want to air their laundry here, but they discussed, yeah, right, they just discussed, you know, was this a normal agenda? And I don't recall off the top of my head, I don't have my notes, but I don't remember the Treasurers' Report, and I think they have a few thousand dollars in their treasury from their pizza mania. And I'll pretty much end it there before I get in trouble, so that's-
I think the good thing about it is, first of all, they were doing everything right on the open meeting law already.
Yes, yes.
But it's very good, it's nice to see a, this organization of the parents, and it's good to have them as a subcommittee of our committee. It's a state law, and it's something we should have been doing all along, and it's wonderful that the parents are coming forward to take, to do that. And so they're very interesting, and they're going to start, they're looking forward to bringing some guest speakers, hopefully, to the community. And so we'll definitely be mentioning, if they're able to do that, who the speakers are and where they are, so that we could, they really would like to have some attendance at some of their functions, as any of us would, so hopefully, we'll be very supportive of that. We had a great time that night, yes.
And also, by law, they're supposed to come in front of the school committee once a year to give a report, but Chairwoman Kane said essentially, you can come whenever you'd like, just notify her and she'll put you on the agenda. In addition, they always have at least someone in the audience, which is fantastic. And I had also suggested that there be at least one CPAC representative to all sort of our major subcommittees here on the school committee, so.
Yeah.
And I think that was pretty much it for the meeting, yeah.
And Mrs. Carroll?
And they're going to try to get babysitting too during those-
That's right.
During, when they have guest speakers, they're going to try to get some babysitting for parents.
Excellent. Very good, thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? We've been busy in between here. That's it. Correspondence, Mr. Hayes?
None tonight.
Okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items. January 30th will be the Selectmen's meeting. February 8th, we'll have our, the, what was I thinking? The budget hearing. The budget hearing. I believe Dr. Quick had asked Mrs. Benton for an update on the electronic devices at the high school, so I believe that may be on the February 8th meeting. The other thing I want to ask you about, we have, we ran into an issue last year, and I don't want to do that again this year. I left it too long. In February, we have meetings on the 8th and, ooh, Ash, the 22nd. And March, we have meetings on the 14th and the 28th, so that's four meetings before we get to April. We need to do Mrs. Benton's evaluation. And I don't want us to be rushed like we were the last time, so I'm wondering if we would plan to have it for the Wednesday, the 11th in April, go back, we could have the information for the month of March, what we would be working on. And so we could give it out on February 22nd. Does that timeline sound good to you? I could write that down for the next meeting and see if we agree with that. How's that? I'll write it down for us for the next meeting, so we'll put that on there, the agenda.
This is where all the comments and everything are?
Yes, oh, excuse me.
This is the public meeting?
Yes.
Right.
Well, we can't talk about it before or after, or just, we have to do it at the public meeting. And I just realized from Mr. Rogiro's, thank you, February 22nd, we're going to have to think about that meeting, because that's school vacation. So if people are not going to be here, we'll have to redo that meeting. So can you let us know on the 8th if you think you'd be available for February 22nd? We'll see. People may be going away with their children, we'll see. So if we don't have it February 22nd, we'll have to have it February 29th. And that's okay, because then we have another week, March 7th, before the 14th, so that would be two weeks there. So we could do that. And we'll decide on the 8th when to have that. Okay? And the other thing I gave you at your seats tonight, we were invited to this Wild, the